Ready? Can I my password? Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. This evening, the first item up, presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. First one is the presentation of award for Kicks for a Cure. And am I going to turn this over to John here?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City, and those who may be listening. I'm John Althoff, and tonight, it's, I proudly wear two hats. As Chair of the, co-chair of the Minnesota American Cancer Society's Men Wear Pink Campaign, and the other is President of the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce. The Men Wear Pink Campaign brings together dedicated men who serve as ambassadors in the fight against breast cancer. Last October, we raised $150,000, and every dollar going directly to the American Cancer Society to fund research, patient support, and life-saving programs. With one in eight women in our region affected and impacted by the disease, our mission is clear. We're here to make a difference. At the same time, the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce serves as a voice of business and connector for Rosemont and other communities across our region. And tonight, these two missions come together in the very best possible way. Two years ago, the DCR Chamber posed a simple but powerful question to our mayors. Would you kick field goals? Like this, right? To help end breast cancer? You know, they're raising so many dollars per kicks. And the DCR Mayor's Cup is part of the Kicks for a Cure campaign was born. And many answered the call that first year, including Mayor Weisensel, and who tied the mayor of Farmington, but he clinched the overall victory by raising more funds in a tiebreaker. That was great. And this past October, even more mayors signed up and answered the call. Mayor Weisensel was sidelined due to a knee injury that some are saying is, because he was getting bionic surgery, bionic surgery to aid him in 2025. Time will tell on that. But stepping up in his place was Councilmember Paul Tyson, who not only kicked with pinpoint 84% accuracy, but once again edged out the Farmington mayor by a slim 2% margin to bring home the win for Farmington in kicks and dollars raised. And so now, it is my great pleasure to present on behalf of the DCR Chamber and the American Cancer Society, for the second year in a row, the two Mayor's Cup trophies for most kicks made.
Oh, my.
Dun, dun, dun.
Ooh.
And most dollars raised.
Dun, dun, dun.
Yeah.
Oh. There we go. Looking good.
So, they go to the city of Rosemont again. So the question is, do I hear a three-peat?
Working on it.
Working on it. That's great. So, that is great. We're glad to have this and present the trophies. They bring a little. Festivity. And also, I did bring a couple, just because their names are on the trophies. For your.
Oh, very nice.
Aw, thank you.
Awesome.
Oh, good, thanks.
But I'd like to present it to you right now, if that works.
Yep, yep, that works.
Are you gonna hold the globe? Someone's gotta hold the globe, please.
Yes, hold the globe.
Get the jerseys on and everything.
These guys are in?
Nickel snap the phone on.
I think mine faded from last year. Are there too much time in the sun here?
Yeah, let's see, this one, this one's for money. All right, and this one, we'll go for kicks.
Here we go. All right.
Well, you were doing a great job. Thank you very much. And I'm sure those will be on display in the.
They will be on display in the, as they were last year. They're getting the feeling they should be there all the time.
Permanent.
All righty, with that, that completes 3A. And we'll move on to 3B, the Wieland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. We are back again with the Annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. This is the 15th year that this program has been in place, and it actually runs starting today, May, I'm sorry, April 1st through April 30th. And the challenge is to inspire civic participation and action around water conservation and water efficiency and the sustainability of our water ecosystem. This encourages cities around the country to participate by taking different pledges and adopt simple water conservation habitats in their neighborhoods, also creating a healthy community, and then also reducing pollution. Some examples of what people can do, pretty simply, by just going online. There are four different areas that people can pledge to try to conserve our water system, and that's things they can do at home, things they can do in their daily life, in your yard and out in your community. So some of those things that you can do at home, that are something you can do along with your family, would be, you know, looking at and finding repaired, or looking for things to repair, such as leaky faucets, pipes, and toilets. You can also shorten shower time or use some kind of a low-flow device, and always turn off your tap water when not being used, obviously. And then also do things like wash full loads of laundry and dishes. Those are some of the things that they identify being done at home. Things you can do in your daily life would be using reusable shopping bags, using refillable bottles or cups, and then also saying no to plastic straws. And these are all things that you can go online and you can click on to pledge that you will try and do these things for your community. Things that you can do in your yard is to help turn off sprinklers when it's raining. A lot of times, the city works with residents on getting smart watering systems in place. Use sprinklers on a minimal setting before 8:00 a.m. And then also look to actually plant different kind of grass seeds that don't require as much water. It's another thing you can do for your yard. And then for your community, obviously, the one that we try and promote quite a bit is to pick up after your pets, dispose of any waste pharmaceuticals safely, just don't flush them, walk and bike to work, or take the bus if possible, recycle batteries and electronics, and then recycle clean paper, cardboard, aluminum, and glass when you can do that. So, those are just some of the things that the annual Mayor's Challenge identifies for people to go online. You click it, you pledge, and you'll get an email, then you can follow up with that, with the program. In your packet tonight, there is a proclamation that I think we need to go through that just identifies that the city is committed to seeing this project through and working with our residents to promote it. So with that, I can stand for questions.
Any questions from Council? Otherwise, we'll go ahead, we'll read the proclamation, and then motion to approve that proclamation. So, the proclamation reads, whereas the city of Rosemont continues to explore ways to manage residential consumption of water and power, and to inspire its residents to care for our natural resources, and?
Whereas cities can engage in efforts to inspire their own communities, as well as their neighboring cities, to become better environmental stewards, and?
Whereas the 15th Annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, presented by the Wieland Foundation and Toyota, with support from the U.S. EPA Water Sense, the Toro Company, National League of Cities, and ZENI, is a nonprofit challenge to residents to encourage pollution reduction and smart water use, and?
With encouragement of their mayors, residents may register their participation in their city's challenge online by making simple pledges to decrease their water use and to reduce pollution for the period of one year, thereby assisting their cities to apply state and federal water conservation strategies and to target mandated reductions, and?
Whereas, from April 1 to 30, 2025, the city of Rosemont wishes to inspire its residents and its neighboring communities to take the Wieland Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com to reduce their impact on the environment and to see immediate savings in their water, trash, and electricity bills. Residents will further be provided with tools to take specific measurable actions throughout the year to improve the sustainable use of natural resources.
Now, and therefore, I Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemont, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim that the city of Rosemont agrees and supports the Wieland Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, emphasis from April 1 through 30, 2025, through a series of communication and outreach strategies, whether new or existing, to encourage Rosemont residents to take the conservation challenge, dated this first day of April, 2025. Sign the mayor. All righty, and with that, I'll move the motion to, the announcement that we just took for the attached proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Weisensel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Limpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Proclamation is proclaimed, 5-0. And that completes that area. I would just note, in the greater Rosemont area, over in our adjacent city, Apple Valley, there is the zoo, and on one, one of the large walls is a Wieland mural that was done some years back. So, they did, the artist, Wieland, did, I believe, about 100 of these across the U.S., and so we're fortunate to have ones so close to us in this water. Conservation effort is along those same lines of his foundation, so. As noted, that completes 3B, and we'll move on to response to public comment 4. Is there any comments we have this evening to respond to? Seeing none, we'll then move on to item 5, public comment. Any individuals wishing to come before Council on subjects that are not part of the meeting agenda may do so at this time. You may ask a question. Comments be directed to the Council. We'll respond to them generally within a week at our next meeting. Anyone wishing to do so, please state your name, your address, and the podium is now open. Anyone? Anyone? All right, seeing no one at this time, we'll consider the public comment closed, and we'll move on to 6A, consent agenda. And I need, there we go. Consent agenda this evening includes items 6A through K, including bills listing minutes for the March 18th regular and special meeting proceedings, approving the subdivision agreement with SKB expansion, commissioner appointments, creation of the senior accountant position, donation acceptance from Dakota Electric, authorizing, authorized request for qualification for a fire services study, resolution supporting retention of city zoning authority, the Morrison second edition final plat, and the approving of the reimbursement agreement with Giga Power. Council wishing to pull any items? One, two?
Nope.
None? I would like to pull, I, resolution supporting retention of city zoning authority. So with that, would someone like to move the consent agenda with items A through K with I removed for further comment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Limpel, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Limpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Okay, those items are approved. I'm pulling up 6I for further discussion, and I look for just a general comments about what this is on, from Mr. Keenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. So before you this evening is a proposed resolution that is addressing a lot of legislation that's going through the Minnesota Legislature right now. There's a lot of twists and turns in this session, and one of the things that's been a theme in the past month or so has been talk about how to solve housing and affordable housing within the state. And some of the methods and bills that are being proposed are seeking to do it through preempting local zoning authorities. So essentially removing some of the tools that we have at our place and prescribing statewide measures with the intent of solving the housing crisis in Minnesota. So in conjunction and alliance with the League of Minnesota Cities, Rosemont doesn't agree with that, that practice in terms of helping us solve it. We all agree that it is an issue that needs to be solved, but there are other ways to do it. And the proposal and the resolution here speaks to ways than the thoughts and the feelings that those are best held within the cities and our own municipal authority.
I would just note in the narrative, again, this is where the state is seeking to preempt local zoning authority, which rests with the cities. And this is important for residents to understand that developments could occur even in existing residential areas where a developer could come in, purchase several houses, and convert that space, in some instances, to quads, five, let's see, four, six, eight-unit places right in the middle of, let's say, in a cul-de-sac. And that's one of the proposals that's out there that we should be aware of, that this preemption takes away all the local authority, meaning it doesn't come before the planning commission. Residents don't have an opportunity to have any say on it, and developers can come in and just simply do it by, by just, you know, it's, it's already established, we don't really have any say on that. In our narrative here, it notes that currently we have nearly 500 units of affordable multifamily housing, either approved or under construction. We also have nearly 400 units of market-rate multifamily housing, both recently opened or in the pipeline. And this is on top of the 1,000 units permitted for new single-family houses over the past three years. So we believe, as many of our adjacent cities, that we are managing and taking care of this issue. This evening, we also received a market study that indicated that over the next, I want to say, four years, from '25 to '29, that we will need to absorb about 1,500 new households. This is across the whole spectrum of housing. We think that is certainly doable, if we're allowed and permitted to take care of that on ourselves and working with developers. So with that, we'll go ahead and read the resolution, supporting retention of city zoning authority, and then take the motion.
Whereas decisions regarding local zoning and land use that best fit community needs are best left to city residents and officials. Whereas cities utilizing zoning and land use regulations to balance property usage, guide community growth, dedicate space and capacity for public infrastructure to support development, roads, parks, and trails, transportation, sewer, stormwater, water, et cetera, mitigate flooding and erosion, and preserve natural resources, among others.
Whereas the Minnesota State Legislator, legislator, in an attempt to address housing availability and affordability challenges, is considering measure that would broadly limit city authority over zoning and land use decisions, transferring that authority to the state government. Whereas, these proposed measures fail to adequately address housing availability and affordability and offer no guarantees that cost savings for developers would translate into lower housing costs for prospective homeowners or renters.
Whereas a rigid state-mandated approach to zoning and land use relying on overly prescriptive mandates would deprive cities of the flexibility necessary to accommodate their unique circumstances. And whereas provisions would also limit opportunities for local residents to voice their concerns regarding proposed developments during public hearings of city council and other public meetings.
And whereas cities across the state have invested years of work to address zoning issues and continue to do so with the help of community engagement.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Rosemont, Minnesota as follows. The city of Rosemont opposes state proposals that seek to broadly limit local zoning and land use decision-making related to residential development, supports constructive policy alternatives that provide cities with performance-based standards to guide developments while maintaining local decision-making and flexibility, and incentivize and bolster city efforts for addressing housing challenges, and advocates for a city-state partnership to consider reforms that are proven to address housing availability and affordability, and respect local-led zoning decisions and community input, adopted this first day of April, 2025, by the city council of the city of Rosemont. Signed, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor. And with that, I'll move the recommended actions, state, to approve the attached resolution supporting the retention of city zoning authority just read.
Second.
Motion by Weisensel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Limpel.
Aye.
And that completes item 6I, resolution supporting retention of city zoning authority. That also completes all of items related to consent agenda 6. Move on to item 7, public hearings, which we haven't done this evening, unfinished business number 8, which we haven't done this evening, and new business 9, which we also have done this evening. We'll move on to announcements. First up, city staff updates. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. I think we've got an exciting weekend in Rosemont, and so I'm not going to take your announcements away from you, Mayor, I'll let you do that in a second. So I will use my prerogative to call out. I had a chance last week to go speak at Bethle University, do a class of public administration students, and they are here tonight, a few of them, and they didn't come up during public comment, and so I'm disappointed in them, but they're here to see a high-functioning city council, and so we're at a 23-minute city council meeting, and so I don't know how long your paper needs to be about the city council. But it was a really fun opportunity for me to speak. These are undergrad students, not all of which are getting majors in public administration. Some are education and finance, but a fun thing to chat with these guys, and thanks for coming today. It's very cool to see them. And if you want to embarrass the mayor, you certainly can, so.
I will.
Oh, good.
Seeing it's the mayor's prerogative, I will reopen.
Oh, dude.
Public comment, and you may come forward and state, what is the greatest thing that you got in your class that you want to share with us? One, two, three, four.
Or one of you, Ryan can do it. He's the designated speaker.
Yep, if you're the designated speaker.
Please state your name and address.
State your name, address.
I want to get a picture for your professor here.
Hi, I'm Ryan Swanda. I'm, my address?
Yes.
6329 Halfag Avenue, South Edina, Minnesota. My major is history and political science. And the greatest thing that I've gotten out of this class is just to see more about how local government works, especially in our major. We see a lot about how our national government gets to work, and it's interesting to get to think about where we come from. We also had the opportunity to interview some local officials, and I had the opportunity to interview our superintendent and one of our school board members, and it was just unique to learn more about where I came from, especially because education is really important to me, so.
Any questions from Council since we're trying to embarrass you?
So what, what's your, what's your ultimate job? What's your goal for a profession?
I would like to receive my PhD in political science, and I would like to become a professor. So, yeah, that's my hope and dreams, so.
Very awesome. Have you had a chance to see the city of Edina?
I haven't in a long time.
Wouldn't you do say hi to Mayor Hovland for me?
I can do that, if I ever get the chance to go back.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Now that was.
Nobody else? Nobody?
That was fun.
Oh, wait, yeah, yeah. Oh, we got, we got more volunteers. Let's do it.
I can't leave them in the dust like that.
There you go.
Um, I'm Ellie Wasserman. I'm a part of that little group over there. But I actually work in the state legislature, so with this class, we're learning about more of the city stuff and more of the smaller things, so I'm very interested. I just love to see how, like, the city things go, because it's still like an important piece, and like, yeah, the state legislature is important, but being able to, like, witness, like, these meetings and, like, the smaller, like, community stuff is super important. But, yeah, I would say that's my take.
Did you think it was interesting we put out a resolution calling out the state this evening?
You know, I, I don't hear it often, but I think it's important to hear. I actually was thinking about it, I was like, oh, like, that's super important to be able to, like, hear those things, and like, yeah, the state government has, like, a lot of things to say and a lot of power, but like, you guys also have a ton of input, and like, I think that was super important to hear, but, yeah, I thought that was interesting, but, yeah.
You can take it back to them.
All right, don't worry, I will. I'll take it back. I'll take it back. I'll say an anonymous, an anonymous source. Don't worry. No names.
Nope, doesn't need to be anonymous.
I'll take notes. I'll take notes. But, yeah.
All right.
And where are you hoping to go with your future?
I want to work in the House of Representatives here, and maybe if I can get out to DC, I think that would be really fun, but, I don't know, I love politics, so, which is weird to say as a 21-year-old, but I do, so, yeah.
That's great.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
How about you other two?
Oh, dear.
Yay!
Pure pressure, it's a beautiful thing.
I know, isn't it?
So, my name is Gretta MacArthur. I'm originally from Fargo, North Dakota, and my major is business and political science, but I'm also very passionate about golf, so I'll graduate in May, and then I'm going to work as assistant golf professional at Bear Path Country Club in Eden Prairie. So, this class was kind of a required course, but I have actually really enjoyed it, and hearing, we've had a couple guest speakers, Logan being one of them, and so it's been fun to just have more of an experience hearing about what, like, jobs in public administration actually look like and hearing from actual people, so I've appreciated that.
I find it interesting this class was required for golf?
Not quite, huh?
Other questions?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Gret.
Thank you.
I find that is.
Four for four, this is fabulous.
It's all because of your leadership.
Coercion, coercion.
Well, hello, I'm Maya Skazachek. I'm the youngest of the group. I'm a sophomore at Bethle University, double major in history and political science, and I'm a resident of Norfield, Minnesota, so just a little bit south of you guys. I was really interested in this class, other than it being kind of required for our ma- at Bethel University, double major in history and political science, and I'm a resident of Northfield, Minnesota, so just a little bit south of you guys. I was really interested in this class, other than it being kind of required for our majors, it's just interesting to learn how the public works. I want to become a lawyer after all of my education, so I'm really hoping that maybe I could be a part of the city council one day, just to see change, not be sitting in the back row, I want to be able to have my hands and feet working and just helping the community.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of you coming up this evening. Now you know how to speak to the council, you, you can do that back in your hometown if you've got something that's just itching there, you don't have to sit in the back row then. Alright, thank you very much.
That's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, upcoming calendar, yes, we have something exciting coming up this weekend. April fifth, from nine-thirty to two-thirty at the Rosemont High School is our Rosemont Expo. So let's see, just naming some of the thing here, we have over fifty local businesses showing up, it's a family-friendly event featuring activities, food and entertainment, and let's see, the Rosemont, what is it, everything that makes Rosemont special, booth reg, no, we don't need to worry about the booth registration, alright. So come out, nine-thirty to two-thirty, if you've got questions, staff will be there, council members should be milling around, so it should be a great time. Other things that are also happening on the fifth is our, let's see, what do we got, the hoses?
Guns and hoses.
Guns and hoses, and that's at the Community Center.
Yep, the rink, yep.
The arena.
The ice rink, and that is from what time? It's not on here.
It starts at six PM.
Six PM it starts, so come out and root for your favorite public safety people, fire, police, police, fire.
With some public works thrown in there as well.
Oh, we got some public works?
Absolutely.
Alright, so we got them all covered, that's great.
But no finance. Okay.
And then, I did here notice that there is a community day, um, let's see, is it the Lions are putting it on? There's a community day, I believe it's held down here at the, um, American Legion, and they are doing their day of, is it giving? I'm going to call that out.
I don't have it on here.
Down there, alright. But I believe that's also happening in town, so look for that. Again, I believe that was the Lions, you should be able to find that on the website, I believe. Other items that are coming up events, April eighth is our Environmental Sustainability Commission meeting from six to seven here at City Hall, and the next, um, geez, this is missing this one too, our next city council, oh, actually, our next Port Authority? We have one on the fifteenth? Or is that canceled?
Nope.
Okay, it's not listed here. April fifteenth, from six to seven is our Port Authority, and from seven to eight is our city council meeting. That completes all those items, is there any items from council?
Nothing here.
Nothing there, so with that, there's no other business to come before city council. I'll move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Excuse me.
Motion's been made in the second at all, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.